W I T N? Do we still have, are we, do we have a call? Okay. The meeting will please come to order. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us, those who are in council chambers and everyone who is joining us virtually. Today is Thursday, July the 11th. My name is Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. And again, on behalf of my colleagues, we just want to thank everyone who was with us this evening. We will have our opening prayer by Akira Granado.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman White.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby. Councilwoman Oliver. Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy. Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field. Councilwoman Cabrera.
Present.
Councilman Mills. Councilman Spadola.
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Present.
President Congo.
Here.
Nine present and four absent.
And councilmembers Darby and Mills, it asks to be excused. And, and Field, thank you. At this time, we'll have the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
July 3rd, 2024, City Council met a regular session with remote participation above date at 6:30 PM. President Ernest M. Congo, the second presiding. The opening prayer was done by.
Mr. President, I move the minutes to be accepted as written.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the minutes be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we will have our committee reports.
July 8th, 2024, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Joint Finance and Economic Development Committee and Community Development, Urban Planning Committees met by anchor location and remote participation to whom was referred ordinance number 24038 in title. An ordinance to amend chapter 40 of the city code regarding salary steps, pay adjustments for.
Mr. President, I move the committee.
voluntary demotions, starting salaries, combined leave payout and eligibility for city sponsored benefits. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend council put on accordingly. Respectfully submitted those members present, Councilman Johnson, Councilwoman Harley, Councilwoman Bracy, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Oliver, Councilman Spadola, and President Congo.
Mr. President, I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried.
July 8th, 2024, we, your Joint Finance and Economic Development Committee and Community Development, Urban Planning Committee met by anchor location, remote participation to was referred ordinance number 24011 in title. An ordinance to amend chapters 42 of the city code regarding permits for certain residential property owners and occupants to use, install, and maintain curbside charging courts and electric vehicle charging stations in a public right of way. Have given this ordinance careful study and recommend council put on accordingly. Respectfully submitted those members present, Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilman Field, Councilwoman Fields, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilman Spadola, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Darby, and Councilman White.
Mr. President, I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we will have our city treasurer's report.
July 11th, 2024, total investment 497 million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Total cash on hand, fourteen million, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Grand total, five hundred and twelve million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventeen cents submitted by Dwayne Sims, city treasurer.
Mr. President, I move the treasurer's report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I'll accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
So moved, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept all non-legislative business on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. We do have three in-person recognition resolutions. We will start with councilmember Oliver.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna start with the family of Cynthia Welly. Could y'all please come up? Anyone here to support Cynthia, please come up. Okay. Before I get started, I want to say a few words about Ms. Welly. She's been in hair business for years. She always makes me look real cute. I plan on going there tomorrow, so watch me this weekend. Okay, sponsors Councilwoman Xanthea Oliver and the entire councilmembers. And whereas it's a census city council to honor individuals and organizations on occasions that amplify outstanding achievement and deserve recognition and acknowledgement. Councilmembers Xanthea Oliver would like to recognize Cynthia Welly of Best of Both Worlds Salon and Barber Shop, B O B W, as one such individual. And whereas Cynthia is the owner and operator of B O B W, a unisex hair salon that has been over, has been throughout the city of Wilmington for years. At a young age, Cynthia knew she had an entrepreneur spirit and dreamed of owning her own business someday. While growing up Cynthia would often do her family and friends' hair in her grandmother's kitchen, Miss Kizzy, I remember Miss Kizzy very well. And whereas Cynthia's clientele had grew, so she needed more space. For more than twenty-two years, the B O B salon has provided her hair service to women, men, and children. Cynthia, also known as Pumpkin, uses her calling as a stylist to build confidence in her clients and bring positivity to their lives. And whereas Cynthia is also an advocate for AIDS Delaware Do the Right Thing, For Life, D T R T, For L program. This is an outreach program that is designed to educate, to educate African Americans about HIV and AIDS. It is, it's a prevention method. Cynthia uses her platform to provide her clients and her community with information in a safe space to learn about critical health topics. And now there be resolved that the council of the city of Wilmington, this legislative body acknowledges Cynthia Welly, Best of Both Worlds and Beauty Shop, B O B W, for creating a safe space for community members to gather, contributing a positive environment for all those who visit her shop. And the efforts to raise awareness for HIV and AIDS. Job well done. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank God. He's ahead of my world. I'd like to thank the city of Wilmington, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Oliver, Trippie, and everyone who, my family, that came out. This is an honor. I've been doing hair for a really long time. Been given just countless hours to make everybody feel pretty and confident. I'm a little nervous, but I just wanted to just say thank you. I appreciate you taking the time out to acknowledge my hard work that I've been putting out through the city and the community. And I'd just like to just say thank you for everyone coming on, especially my family that is always here to support me. So, thank you. Can you see them all? That's better.
You know, as I was reading the agenda, when I saw your name, I was like, I know this name from somewhere. Then I see it's you, Pumpkin. When I was reading the agenda, I saw your name, Cynthia, I'm like, I know this name. Where do I know her from? Then I see it's you, I'm like, oh, Pumpkin. It's, I mean, it's, you know, there's a saying that says you, you'll be who you surround yourself with. And I just look at your entire crew, your family, your friends, and everybody who is, who just came up here with you. And everybody is just doing a great job for advocating for people and children and the unfortunate in our city. So, just keep doing what you guys have always done. I'm really, really happy for you, proud of all of y'all, and I'm honored to be considered a part of your crew too, so.
Thank you, Pumpkin. Yeah, you're right about that, Trippie, they got about three entrepreneurs out there where from all I'm doing real good. We'll take a picture with y'all right after this. Okay. Next, we have the gentlemen or females who sponsored the third district fishing trip. Could you please come up? Mr. Holly and Mr. Ken Livingston.
All right, how you doing?
So I want to say something about these gentlemen. They sponsored the fishing trip, which was down in Chesapeake Bay. And we took about forty young men, minority young men who would never probably have the opportunity to even go fishing. And these gentlemen were major sponsors of it. So, I thought it was only fair to honor them for their hard work. And there's several more, I know Jeff Starkey, but today's birthday, it's about five of them, but I will mention their names. Okay, sponsor, Councilwoman Xanthea Oliver and the entire body of council. Whereas it's a census city council to honor individuals on occasions that amplify outstanding achievements and deserving of recognition and acknowledgements. Councilwoman Xanthea Oliver would like to recognize the sponsors of the third district fishing trip. And whereas the fishing trip was co-sponsored by Wilmington Department Parks and Recreation, tri-state injury care rehabilitation center, will welcome forty intercity youth for a day of fun on a fishing trip. They will travel forty miles aboard Island Queen Two, a fifty-five foot long, seventeen foot wide headboat in Graysonville, Maryland, on Chesapeake Bay. And whereas the professional guide of Captain Tyrone, a fifth generation fisherman with over forty years of experience, giving underserved youth the opportunity to fish. Participants will learn how to bait, their rods, cast, and reel their catches. They will also learn how to clean the fish for cooking. Most importantly, they will learn about marine life, biology, conservation, patience, determination. For some, it will be their first time outside the city. And whereas the third district fishing trip will provide invaluable memories for youth who would not otherwise have the opportunity. The council would like to recommend Marvin Newton, the chief mechanic service, William Holly of Dependable Construction of Delaware, Ken Livingston of United Way. We have Jimmy Wilkinson of R and A Contracting Company, J R Star LLC, which is Jeff Starkey, for their support for this worthy cause. Their generosity will allow youth to learn new skills, spend time in the nature, in nature, and make invaluable memories with their peers. Positive adult role models. And one thing we learned, well, I already know I've been fishing for most of my life. I used to go to Camp Tacoma, if anybody knows about Camp Tacoma. One thing which was brought up, and Ken and I was laughing about it. These young men had never been out to city, and they didn't realize, the one guy looked up, Ken, to tell you a story, says, wow, I haven't been on my phone all day, I'm looking like, no, you need both hands to fish. So, some people don't realize that fishing, you need both hands if you've never been. Now there be a resolve by the city council that this legislative body sponsored the third district fishing trip for their wellness and investment. We really appreciate all your contributions that you made for youth to participate in a free fishing trip. And this will be a lifetime experience, job well done. Could you come say a few words?
Good evening. I would first like to thank councilperson Xanthea Oliver for this recognition. Thank the rest of the council members for having us here this evening. I would also like to thank the Monday Club, who was also a contributing sponsor to really make this event happen. And like Councilwoman Oliver just said, it really is an opportunity to get inner-city youth out of the city, to give them an opportunity and exposure to that they wouldn't have any otherwise. So, it's really a great time. And not only do they learn how to fish, but it's also for us as a men, the opportunity to pour into these youth, to really get into their world, to talk about what's going on, to help them figure out life and solve problems. And it just allows us to mentor to these youth. I have youth that I work with over at the William Hicks Anderson Community Center, and they've been asking me all year, when is the fishing trip? When is the fishing trip? When is the fishing trip? So, this is really a worthwhile investment to be able to have the opportunity to take these boys out on the Chesapeake to go fishing. So, they really do believe in it, they really enjoy the experience. I enjoy the experience, once again, because I get to pour into them. And once again, I do enjoy fishing. And I said the other day on Community Crossfire, if anybody's watching that's going on the trip, I am gonna catch the most fish.
Hello, good evening, everybody. You know, I'd like to thank Xanthea, Trippie, all the city council, just for this award here. This was very, very, very nice. I also want to thank my beautiful fiancee sitting in there just for always, always, right, being there, supporting me and all my ventures. But enough about us, it's all about the kids. This is my second year doing this, sponsoring this fishing trip, and I really, really was glad to do it. And the reason why is because as I was growing up, I could never catch a fish. I always thought fishing was boring. It was about four years ago, myself and Jeff Starkey, we all went on a fishing trip, it was a male's fishing trip, and I was able to catch three fish. And it was very fun. It was a lot of fun. So, Jeff came to me with the idea, hey, let's sponsor some kids and let's get them to go on this trip. We did it last year, and I was so happy that he got me involved to do it again this year. And this is really, really something that we need for our inner kids. Because I remember when I was a kid growing up, my mother didn't have much money, and we, we went on this camping trip called Bigfoot. And they took me down to Harpers Ferry to Virginia, and I just loved that trip. So, I know what it did, did for me, and I'm grateful to do it for others. Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Fields. Councilmember Fields.
One more thing, can't let them show me up. I want to thank my wife too. Thank you, babe, I love you for always supporting me, so thank you.
Councilmember Fields.
Excuse me, gentlemen, I just want to say something. I want to say congratulations, well done, job well done. I seen the pictures, and I was really trying to get on the boat, right? And Xanthea was like, no, it's for the kids. I was like, I want to go fishing, she's like, no. But it just brought back memories of me being young, going down to Louisiana in the bayou. And my grandmom used to take us fishing, but we went early in the morning. And she taught us how to catch the fish, and she taught us how to clean the fish. And those are life lessons that you will never forget. And so, when you said it, I'm like, see, I should have went on that trip.
Well, you didn't go this year.
But, you know, it's just very encouraging. And I think this is gonna get bigger than you ever expected it to be. So, keep up the good work, I'm watching y'all, I got some for y'all too. Well, I would like to make the announcement, the fishing trip is July the 27th. So, if anybody has, having the youth, it was seven and up, please feel free to reach out, because we do have a couple more spaces. If you'd like to go this year, feel free.
At this time, councilmember Bracy.
Okay, could all of the representatives from Sallie's Vietnam come forward, please? So, I am reading these two resolutions on behalf of Councilwoman McCoy, who couldn't be here today. We have two celebrating the baseball and volleyball teams. Well, actually, it's one. And the sponsor again, councilmember Yolanda McCoy. Where is, it is a sense of city council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilmember Yolanda McCoy would like to commend the Sallie's Vietnam basketball, excuse me, and volleyball teams on their impressive winning seasons. Whereas, the Sallie's Vietnam School, also known as Sally's, baseball team completed a Cinderella tournament run. The team started the season ranked thirteenth out of a twenty-four team bracket. Wow. They went on to defeat the fourth, third, and first seed teams over the 2023 and 2024 season. After several extraordinary wins, the team went on to defeat Caesar Rodney High School in the DIAA state championship game with a score of seven to three at Frawley Stadium. Their victory marked Sally's first win since 2008. And whereas, under the leadership of baseball head coach Ted. And whereas, under the leadership of baseball head coach Ted Godfrey, the Sally's baseball team has achieved six state championships. Recently, Coach Godfrey achieved his one-hundredth victory as head coach. This council commends Coach Godfrey and all the members of Sally's baseball team for their skill and determination. And whereas Sally's volleyball team completed their season by claiming their first ever DIAA State Championship victory. After a successful season in sixteen regular season games, they went on to defeat the Charter School of Wilmington in three straight sets. And whereas the volleyball team is led by longtime coach Jeff Grechall. Under his guidance, the team has achieved remarkable success, including being the top seed in the DIAA Boys Volleyball Tournament and maintaining an impressive record. And whereas these two teams have demonstrated the power of teamwork and dedication. Several players have been named All-State Players and recognized for their talents on and off the field. This council applauds the accomplishments of the dedicated members and staff. May they continue to excel in all their future endeavors. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Wilmington. That this council is pleased to commend the Silesiana baseball and volleyball teams for their DIAA championship wins and the pride they bring to the City of Wilmington. Job well done.
Hello, I'm Ted Godfrey. I'm the head baseball coach at Silesiana School. This year we had a phenomenal run. I'm extremely proud of our boys. Sally's had, always had a lot of roots in the city of Wilmington and I love the fact that we represent Wilmington to the best of our ability. We are a city school and we have a long history and we take that very seriously. We're very grateful to be represented tonight and very grateful for the accomplishments and that our boys did. So thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Jeff Grechall, head volleyball coach. Like to say good evening, city council. Thank you for having us here, honored guests. And community members, thank you for coming and helping us in this. It's an incredible recognition and it's a tremendous honor to stand before you today to be part of Silesiana volleyball, with the Silesiana volleyball team. The state championship represents more than just a title. It embodies the hard work, dedication, and resilience of our athletes. Achieving an undefeated season is a remarkable feat and it speaks volumes about the commitment and determination of our players. We had a perfect record this year, which was kind of amazing. But their relentless pursuit of excellence, both on and off the court, is what made that happen. Winning this championship was a team effort and I would like to acknowledge the unwavering support of the school parents and the entire community. Your encouragement and belief in these young men have been instrumental in their success. To our players, the commitment to excellence, your determination to overcome challenges, and the relentless pursuit of improvement have brought us to this moment. Finally, this recognition is a reminder of the power of teamwork and the importance of striving for greatness. It is an honor to contribute to the legacy of Silesiana Athletics and we look forward to many more victories together. Thank you once again for this honor. We are proud to bring this undefeated championship home to Wilmington. Thank you.
I would also like to recognize the family members of these outstanding young men. If you wouldn't mind standing for us, please? And if it's okay, would have the parents, the family members to come forward and be a part of the group picture?
The group picture. Come on down.
Are you okay? All right. All right.
Oh, she's out there.
Is there a sport that Silesiana hasn't won a state title in? All right. What sport is that? I can't imagine.
I don't want to point him out.
Okay, now we're not going to do that. It seems like you guys are here every year, getting another recognition for winning a state title, so definitely, congratulations. All right, thank you. Congratulations, gentlemen. All right, thanks again. Would also like to recognize, coming from Councilmember Nathan Field, Ms. Mary T. Barksdale on her one-hundredth birthday. From Councilmember Spadola, he would like to recognize the Greater Experience Worship Center. And also we are adding to the agenda results, Councilmember Oliver's resolution of recognition for Cynthia Whaley. And her sympathy resolutions for Ramon Randall Senior and Robert McGee. And Mary L. Spencer, thank you. Has anyone signed up for public comment, WITN? Okay, thank you. So at this time, we would normally have public comment. We are going, since no one signed up, we are going to move straight into legislative business. Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President. I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-four zero forty-six, Agenda zero four five nine. Whereas pursuant to Section two, three, six, three of the city code, the city council deemed it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city's sponsor grant applications.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by aye or nay vote. Second.
It's been properly moved and second, this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by aye or nay vote on the question.
Yes, this resolution authorizes the Department of Public Works grant application to the state of Delaware Department Health and Social Services. For merging competitive and small disadvantaged communities grants in amount that not exceed two million four hundred two hundred thousand ninety hundred twenty-six dollars. The proposed grant would be used to support completing design for the first phase construction to incorporate the most effective, cost-effective means of removing PFAS. From the city's source at the Porter and Brandywine Plant. No matching funds are required.
And seeing no hands raised. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields. Off the floor. Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Eight ayes. And five, five absent.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-four zero thirty-eight, Agenda zero four five eight. An ordinance to amend Chapter forty of the city code regarding salary steps, pay adjustments for promotions, voluntary demotions, starting salaries, combined leave payout, and eligibility for city-sponsored benefits.
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for the aye or nay vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and called for a aye or nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President. This ordinance, for the most part, is aligning our code with the compensation study that was conducted. The major areas that are being impacted to be aligned with the code are the salary step increases around replacing and codifying the salary structure. Benefits, codifying the policy of offering healthcare benefits to all employees on their date of hire. Internal promotions, there are some changes as it relates to the minimum salary increase for internal promotions. Voluntary demotions, establishing some guidelines around that particular area. And sick payout. And I would like to just end with the fact that the fiscal impact of this ordinance will be approximately seventy thousand dollars annually for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. And the adopted annual operating budget is sufficient to support this de-minimus amount.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing all the hands raised, I'd like to also recognize Councilmember Yolanda McCoy, who has joined us.
So noted.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman, um, excuse me, Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Ten ayes and three absent.
Declared adopted.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-four zero eleven, Agenda zero four zero zero. An ordinance to amend Chapter forty-two of the city code regarding permits for certain residential property owners and occupants. To use, install, and maintain curbside charging courts and electric vehicle charging stations in the public right of way.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for a aye or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, that be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and called for a aye or nay vote on the question.
Yes, this is a, this is a long time coming. This is electric vehicle charging stations have been a hot topic over the past few years. This is a first step as this is allowing residents to be able to install charging cords. So the past years, I've gotten requests and other council members have gotten requests as well for people to install charging stations. Well, prior to this, we didn't have an option. And actually, the state passed a law last year, we actually were required to implement a law as we're the largest city in the state. So we're kind of the first to do this. This at least sets some permitting guidelines and safety guidelines around installation of cords. So we can make sure, obviously, our neighborhoods, you know, avoid any fire hazards. So this is a great first step. This is not solve the issue of commercial charging, which is still a hot topic in the working group. Really needs to reconvene and look at that along with administration and subsequent administrations. We're going to need commercial charging hubs like gas stations in the city. That's something that's going to be necessary, but we're not there yet. So again, this is a great first step. I shout out essentially to everyone who helped out, all the advocates. You know, Coral Castle has been instrumental, Sierra Club as well, and other organizations in helping this move forward. So I appreciate everyone's support and I'll look forward to making us a twenty-first century, hopefully greener city.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yes, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add to what the sponsor said regarding, a number of us have received requests as it relates to this topic. And so I am happy to see us moving forward, at least with this first step around electric vehicle charging stations. And allowing people to do it in a way that is regulated. So I think this is a good first step and I'm looking forward to seeing the manual that was discussed in the committee meeting. Regarding the process and manuals and things of that nature. So thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for sponsoring this. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. And seeing all the hands raised. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Ten ayes and three absent.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Bracy.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present on your behalf and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance twenty-four zero thirty-nine, Agenda zero four six zero. An ordinance to approve and authorize an extension of the franchise agreement between Comcast of Newcastle County LLC and the City of Wilmington. Mr. President.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to approve and authorize an extension of franchise agreement between Comcast of Newcastle County LLC and the City of Wilmington.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Finance and Economic Development Committee and CVT Commission.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee and the CVT Commission.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-four zero forty-seven, Agenda zero four six one. Whereas pursuant to City Charter Section eight two oh four, every department, board, and commission may accept on behalf of the city conditional gifts of personal property and money which shall be useful in connection with the work of such department, board, or commission with authority from council so to do. And whereas the Roberto Clemente.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by aye or nay vote.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by aye or nay vote on the question.
Mr. President, this resolution authorizes the Department of Parks and Recreation to accept a gift of forty thousand dollars from the Roberto Clemente Basketball League, Baseball League, excuse me. To be used for laser grading of the baseball infield. So much needed work and repairs to Woodlawn Park.
All right, thank you. Seeing no hands raised. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Ten ayes and three absent.
Declared adopted.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-four zero forty-eight, Agenda zero four six two. Whereas pursuant to City Charter, Section eight two oh four, every department, board, and commission may accept.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by aye or nay vote.
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by aye or nay vote on the question.
Mr. President, this resolution authorizes the Department of Parks and Rec to accept a gift of thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents from the Christina School District. To be used for the restoration of the perimeter decorative fencing adjacent to Kirkwood Park. So again, another repair that needed to be made.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. And seeing no other hands raised. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Hold on, sorry. Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Spadola.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Ten ayes and three absent.
Declared adopted. At this time, we will move to petitions and communications, starting with Councilmember White.
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, Mr. President. There's an event in Price's Park on July the twentieth. I don't have the paper in front of me. I think it's pretty much in normal time. It's normally from like two to seven. A lot of giveaways with Reverend Heron from Newcastle, his church, with Ms. Danielle Covington. Who found herself in a pinch and there's some council members were able to help her out. Also, having partnered with Councilman Chris Johnson for a NorCam door knocker. Over on Third Street where we have a lot of deaths with overdoses of opium and fentanyl within the last couple of months. If you notice, it's been a lot of sympathy resolutions and a lot of them have been related to overdoses. So partnered with Chris Johnson and we plan on walking over there at the eighteenth and that's going to be at one o'clock and we're looking for any volunteers. And that will be all right now.
All right, thank you.
I have one last thing.
Okay.
Sep- August, I mean, September the thirty-first over Reverend Weeks Church, it's a event for everyone, men's meet and greet. Everyone's invited, feel free to come, but the doors will be locked. You won't be able to get in after five o'clock, so just wanted to stress that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I have two announcements. On this coming Saturday, July the thirteenth, there's gonna be a Stop the Violence Block Party, Saturday at, um, from twelve to four at Kirkwood Park on East Eleventh Street. There's gonna be live music, food trucks, kids' zones, sports competitions, and basically we're just encouraging, um, all those in, on the east side and around the city to join us on this Saturday, again, um, July thirteenth from twelve to four at Kirkwood Park. And then on, um, I just want to mention, since we will be out of session on July the twenty-fifth, we're gonna have Play Streets at, at Ezeon Baptist Church on Eighth and Walnut from six-thirty to eight-thirty. And again, that's July the twenty-fifth, that's Play Streets at Ezeon Mount Carmel on Eighth and Walnut from six-thirty to eight-thirty. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yes. I have two quotes. Just one small positive thought in the morning can change your whole day. Keep your face always towards the sunshine and shadows will fall behind you. And I just wanna say to everybody, just have a, a great summer, enjoy your summer, please stay cool. There are some upcoming events, and please always visit our website for the Wilmington City Council, and you can find out about whatever events that we do have coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So I had two things I would like to mention. Uh, the very first one is a teen money class from ages twelve to eighteen is gonna be held at MSK Community Center on Tuesday and Thursday of next week, the sixteenth and the eighteenth. It's basically how money works and a, a book is included. So if you would like to get more information and how to register your team, the website is www.IAMMSK.org. The other thing that I would like to mention is we will be having a movie night, God willing, if the, if the weather holds, um, and it's not too hot, on July eighteenth at Kushusco's Park, we will be having a movie night. I believe the movie is Trolls? I don't think I've gotten a chance to see that one yet, so hopefully on July eighteenth, we will, we will get a chance to meet all together again for a movie night. So I look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Now, uh, we are getting ready for summer break, but we still have a lot going on in the city, um, in terms of summer, uh, Summer in a Park Series, uh, which is co-sponsored by the City of Wilmington and also the Grand, um, that is moving all over the city. There's multiple locations on the east side. The upcoming west side locations, there's a concert this upcoming July seventeenth in the Union Park Gardens, and then on July thirty-first, they will be at Father Tucker. All of the events are six P.M., so, um, please bring the family. Bernie's Water Ice will be there, so, um, please come out and enjoy, stay cool. And otherwise, um, we are again on break, but we're always on as we always, as all of you know, so you can always reach us at City Council at five, seven, six, twenty-one, forty, or you can just reach out to us individually, especially fan giveaways. We still have those going on, so please, again, reach us and let us know if it's senior or someone who's low income, needs a fan, and we can make sure it gets out. Be safe, everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to announce a few events that are coming up. This Saturday is the Pirate Festival, July thirteenth at the Kalmar Nickel from twelve to four P.M. One of my favorite events. There'll be so many activities for children to do. It's a family-centered event, and the kids get to learn a little bit about being a pirate and nautical activities, tours of the Kalmar Nickel, so I encourage families to come out. Also, the concert series at the Urban Artist Exchange on Walnut Street started out with some of our local performance, but now the Levitt Foundation-sponsored concerts have begun with the first one last night. They run from seven to eight-thirty P.M. Sometimes we have a six-thirty P.M. performance before the main act comes on. Really amazing, in spite of the heat, it was very breezy and nice out there, and the sun does go down, uh, by the time they hit the stage at seven P.M., so come out, bring your blanket, chairs, uh, the city provides water, and it's just a fun time, and there's vendors there as well. Little bit of competition going on in the city with the concerts. You can catch one at the Sugar Bowl, starting at six-thirty, and the Sugar Bowl is right there in Brandywine Park by Baynard Boulevard and the Vietnam Memorial. So those are from six-thirty to eight P.M. Last night, we saw a couple residents that were catching both of the, of the concerts. Lots to do in our city and in our parks. Last but not least, the movies in the park series have kicked off already, and though the one last night is going to be rescheduled on the Seventh Street Bridge, we'll be waiting for that date and time. There is one taking place this evening, the eleventh, the Bob Marley One Love is happening at the Urban Artist Exchange this evening, and they usually start around eight, eight-thirty P.M. when it starts to get dark. As Councilwoman McCoy mentioned, Trolls Band Together will be at Kushusco Park July eighteenth, August seventh is Ghostbusters, Frozen Empire, and on, at East Lake Park, and Kung Fu Panda at Rodney Square. So, you know, grab a blanket, bring the kids, and just have a good time and enjoy all the activities that the city has for our children. Also, in Haynes Park on Tuesdays and Thursdays, there is a summer camp that happens for a few hours during the day. The kids get to learn and have hands-on activities, and there's a bee pollinator garden that has been started as well. That's it. Thank you. Everybody enjoy the break.
Thank you. Councilmember Spadola.
Nothing tonight, Council President.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy.
Yes, um, just wanted to announce that, um, again, that Play Streets is back and it is in memory of our former colleague, Councilwoman at Large, Rashima Dixon. So it is sponsored by the Rajim, Rashima Dixon Foundation and myself and the Department of Parks and Rec. The first event is being held right now, actually, at Harland School from six-thirty to eight-thirty, and there are dates throughout July and August, next Tuesday and next Thursday. Councilmember Harley already mentioned, Ezeon Mount Carmel, and there's one on Tuesday, the sixteenth, on Twenty-second and Monroe. And then in August, there are also dates on the first, and, um, first Tuesday and Thursday of the month, and the second Tuesday and Thursday of August. So you can find all of those dates online, you can visit Parks and Rec, or you can check social media for all of the information about Play Streets. That's it.
All right, thank you. On Saturday, August the third, it will be the twentieth annual Duffy's Hope Celebrity Basketball Game. He already has a stellar lineup, so please make sure that you are able to support this amazing fundraiser. Again, that is gonna be on Saturday, August the third. As a few of my council members have already mentioned, we are going to be officially on summer break. There won't be any more council meetings until Thursday, August twenty-second. That would be our next official City Council meeting. But until then, please feel free to reach out to us. We will still be here for you. You can call us at three zero two, five, seven, six, twenty-one, forty. I get our number is three zero two, five, seven, six, twenty-one, forty, if you need anything during our summer break. And with that, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
So move second.
Third.
It's been, um, second and third and fourth to adjourn, and with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for joining us.